Call this meeting then to order, and we'll start with our pledge to the flag so that everyone can stand.
Our flag has disappeared, so we will.
Get the flag on the wall over there.
Oh, we'll go right there.
Okay, and Mr. Michael Travis, if you can lead us.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Navarro?
Here.
Lewandowski?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Lopez Caneva?
Here.
We'll start with our resolution, our Eagle Scout, Jacob Kennedy.
You've got it. Unfortunately, Jacob, I just got an email about an hour ago, Jacob is not able to make it, but I thought we would go ahead and read the resolution anyway, just because of the significance of his accomplishment. And also Jacob is a alum now, so it's likely in July and August he will be thinking about where he will be next. So this is a resolution recognizing Jacob Emerson Kennedy for achieving Eagle Scout status, the highest status you can get in the Boy Scouts of America. Whereas Jacob Emerson Kennedy, a senior student and now an alum at Lockport Township High School District 205, has achieved Eagle Scout status, the highest rank awarded by the Boy Scouts of America for his project of managing scouts and other volunteers to follow steps to complete the family meeting room library that included a book drive, clean and sorted donated books, designed, constructed, painted bookshelves, and assembled a children's library with book selections ranging from birth to age 21 at the SOS Children's Village in Lockport. And whereas Jacob Emerson Kennedy also assisted the children at SOS Children's Village that encouraged residents to relax through reading, he helped those most vulnerable in our community, he had to navigate through COVID-19 restrictions and alter timelines, which was challenging due to the nature of leading volunteers. He included symptom checks, mask wearing, creating outdoor work sessions, all things we're familiar with, and additional safety protocols to keep his volunteers safe and healthy. Whereas Jacob Emerson Kennedy has brought honor and distinction to himself, his family, school, community, scout masters, and Lockport Troop Number 50 by achieving this status. And whereas Jacob Emerson Kennedy was aided and guided in these achievements by his family and scout master Tracy Clough. Jacob, you just came in! Jacob, so stand out up so we can acknowledge you. I apologize. I got an email that, yeah, give you a real... Well, I apologize, Jacob. I got an email that you weren't going to be able to make it, but we're certainly glad that you are here. So I'll finish reading this. Is this your family?
Yeah.
Come on in. Yeah, y'all have to come on in. And you can stand right over here, and we'll be sure to get a picture of you. I was just finishing reading the resolution, and for the Kennedy family, I'm just going to back up a little bit, okay? Just talk a little bit about what we did. So I apologize to anybody who's going to hear it again, but I'm sure like for you to hear this resolution. So I introduced the project and the highest honor in Boy Scouts of America. So I'm just going to back up to the work that you did, okay, Jacob? Is that all right?
Yeah.
Great. Whereas Jacob Emerson Kennedy also assisted the children in SOS Children's Village that encouraged residents to relax through reading, he helped those most vulnerable in our community. He had to navigate through COVID-19 restrictions and alter timelines, which was challenging due to the nature of leading volunteers. He included symptom checks, mask wearing, creating outdoor work sessions, and additional safety protocols to keep his volunteers safe and healthy. And whereas Jacob Emerson Kennedy has brought honor and distinction to himself, his family, school, community, scout masters, and Lockport Troop Number 50 by achieving this status. And whereas Jacob Emerson Kennedy was aided and guided in these achievements by his family and scout master Tracy Clough. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, on this 21st day of June 21st. So congratulations. So, so we got to get a picture of your family. Can you introduce who this is with you, Jacob, so we just know?
This is my band up.
Yeah, it's a stand-up situation.
This is my mom, dude, this is my dad, Brian, and my little sister, Kenya.
Awesome. Great, great. Now I'm going to come on over, and we've got a certificate for you as well. And Mrs. Wheeler, you know, didn't happen like the other day. All right, and we've got a good picture of your family, yeah.
Mom wanted to, she didn't want to.
We'll do whatever we need. You guys want to come in here, maybe take a picture. And if you are, it'd be a pleasure, you can unmask, since you have a family, so we'd rather have a picture with you unmasked, so.
Congratulations. Sorry for the confusion. There was a little, there was just a timing and, hey, confusion.
That's like living at my house. And you guys can say as long or short as you want, so we're just honored that you're here.
Jacob, on behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations on your Eagle Scout, and we are very proud of you. And again, as Dr. McBride said, we're going to continue with our business here. You're welcome to stay. Again, you're free. Thank you again for coming, even if it was like, better late than never, right?
Yeah, we're so glad we got to see you, yeah. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're trying to excuse ourselves, because I have to do some stuff for scouts.
No, no worries. No worries. It's all good. It's all good. Congratulations, Jacob.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Enjoy your summer.
All right, there is no student reports, AFT, there is none. All right, ISB Governing Board report.
Governing Board is coming up for a meeting. I don't have a date on top of my head. But I'm registered to go to it. It's going to be virtual online. This is where we discuss what programs we want to present to the region, and also elect officers. So I think we're up for new officers this year. Other than that, we got to, everybody have your packet, the triple I. So if you want to go to some of the pre-conference workshops, let Kathy know. Usually they're pretty good, so you should consider taking one, if not two. Okay. That's all I have.
All right. Foundation Board Report, Mr. Ives.
Yes, eighteen couldn't make it today, and I said, I'll be happy to step in. We, it has been a very busy year end. Last week, we had our first golf tournament in a couple of years over at Prairie Bluff. The weather couldn't have been better. We had 105 people in attendance, which is even pre-COVID. That's better than some of our pre-COVID numbers, which is good. We raised a little over $16,000 for the foundation, which was awesome. So, you know, that went very well, and the whole structure of the Park District did a great job, the staff. And I love it when all the scholarship recipients come in their shirts based on the schools they're going to, which I like that, so.
It's great.
And so in addition to that, we facilitated donation to the 100-plus Women Who Care in Will County, and to the LTHS Best Buddies Program for $6,300. The foundation also gave a $18,000 check to the school here to use for Digital Creation Studio. That'll be part of the MIS rebuild that is under construction now. This will be used for equipment for a TV and a podcast studio, which I think is a great idea. The money was made possible, Sitco gave us a $9,000 grant. DLA Architects, who seems they're always supporting our causes, gave a $4,000 check, and the foundation matched DLA's with another $4,000.
That is good.
So we did that, and Frankie Hatley is voting as a new member. So we have her. And so we ended the, the year was tough to start, but it ended very strong.
That's good. I'm glad. Thank you. All right, Legislative Report.
Busy, busy times in Springfield. This is not a comprehensive list. There have been so many bills that have landed on the governor's desk. These are bills of note that landed on the governor's desk. As of sending this to you last week, they had not yet been signed. So I don't think these have been signed, but usually when they pass both House and Senate, they will be signed. Probably the most significant bill that I've been sharing with you that did get signed by the governor, we are, actually, we expected to get signed by the governor, is the legislation to extend the age for our special education transition students to 23. So we're already planning along those lines to meet the needs, because we'll have an increased capacity due to students who would have aged out this year, who will not age out, will stay with us. So we're going to be doing some leasing of property, where we'll have classrooms offsite so that we can accommodate an increased population. And I think that that law is here to stay, and to stay for a while. And we've got some immediate planning that we're doing with that right now, but we'll have some planning that we're going to have to do in the future. That population will grow and do the good work of Dr. Huntington. Our program is very attractive, and the spotlighting that Mrs. Wheeler did in a great video and on Fox TV about a partnership with Second City Greens, you know, only going to grow. Just a few things of note to share with the board. These are not signed, but I anticipate them being signed. One significant one is a change in evaluation that would change. A teacher whose performance is rated excellent or proficient would shift to only being evaluated every three years, not every two years, if signed. So that's passed both. Presently, we evaluate teachers every two years. These are tenured teachers. This would shift to every three years. Significant, sex education, I mean, you include now sexting. So an affirmative standard to educate students on sexting. The board, I've shared with you in your update, working with retired detective Rich Wistaki, a national expert on cybercrime, on cyber surveillance. So this law bolsters that, trying to provide parents, staff, students with, number one, education, but when those issues come up, proper investigation of those things. In addition to Aaron's Law, which is a law that's become really almost a national law, adopted first in Illinois, that protects underage students, underage children, from abuse. And this adds grooming, definition of grooming and grooming behaviors to the kind of protection that is included in preventing minors from abuse. Interesting, this is, in my high school principal days, quite a battle here in the state of Illinois and hairstyles. Hairstyles is being eliminated from dress codes. There was a period of time where one saw quite a bit of dress code in the state of Illinois that referred to certain headwear that students would wear as a hairstyle, braiding as a hairstyle, both in athletics and in schools. And now, dress policy shall not apply to hairstyles, including hairstyles historically associated with race, ethnicity, or hair texture. And then, an interesting thing, Trauma-Informed School Board. It would add, oh, I'll grab your question in a second, sign. It would add in your training, if signed, that school board members would have to, you know, you have, you know, trainings that you have to take through Illinois Association of School Boards, you would also have to take training in what's called trauma-informed practices. Yes, I am.
You said hairstyles only based on race and ethnicity?
Primarily. The way that the passage reads is that, "Provides a school uniform or dress code policy adopted by a school board or local school council shall not include or apply to hairstyles, including hairstyles historically associated with race, ethnicity, or hair texture." So in the general sense, it's hairstyles in general. And in my 32 years, I've seen everything. I've seen Mohawks. I've seen dress codes that prohibit kids from wearing Mohawks. I've seen dress codes in my time that have prohibited dying one's hair.
So dying and Mohawks are now legal?
Yeah, now since you cannot have a dress code in the state, if signed by the governor, that punishes, disallows hairstyle.
Cool.
Also, just of note, you know, eventually, important to us, both at the federal and state levels, Juneteenth has been declared a holiday, noting the end of slavery in the United States, the official end of slavery, the practice. And so we'll be working, Mr. Candari will be working to add that to our, you know, list. And it is a non-day at the federal and state level if it falls on a weekday. Any other questions about legislation? It's been very busy in Springfield.
Thank you.
You bet. Also, just one, I'm going to talk about in my superintendent report, but we are navigating the school world of Phase Five. And I'll talk about that in my report. And there's a document that I shared with board members that I'll reference in my report as well. Sharing with people in here, for example, in a setting like this, we're in a school. So in the hallways of the school, ISBE and IDPH is asking all of us to wear a mask. So when we step outside of this door, right now, currently, to mask. Inside a meeting, the protocol here is you may unmask if you're vaccinated, but you must be six feet apart if you don't have a mask. You should mask if you are not vaccinated. And if you're vaccinated and you're just uncomfortable and you want to wear a mask, wear your mask. So you can see what we're trying to navigate here in this Phase Five time right now.
So you have to take people for their word if they do get vaccinated?
You really do. You know, we're not asking for vaccination cards as people walk into a board meeting. But I'll talk a little, maybe a little bit more about that in my superintendent report.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McBride.
You bet.
All right, Communications. We received two notes of thanks, the first one being from Dawn Bishop. She said, "Thank you for 30 years of Lockport Township High School memories." This is a recently retired teacher. She was the LTHS class of 1974 and class of 2021. Retirees, is what she wrote. And then the other one is from the District Council 205 membership, just as a thank you for our continued support while navigating the school year. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shaw. All right, there are no Freedom of Information requests. All right. Comments on the agenda? A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the agenda item they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker, per agenda topic, will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. And we have, let's see, Ms. Andrea Baumhart? All right, okay.
Yeah, if you could just, for the public comment, if you could use the table, just the table. It helps with the mic to pick up for the livestream that we're still doing.
All right, and I'm going to, I'm going to have our Vice President, Dick Ives, keep up. He's going to be my timekeeper, so, okay?
Is the microphone on?
Mm-hmm.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi.
Hello.
My name is Andrea Baumhart, and I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I really appreciate it. I've been a teacher here at Lockport, serving as a teacher for 23 years, and it's been a great place to work. I've been, you know, watching a bunch of school board meetings happening over the last couple of weeks in Illinois. And it's come to my attention that ISBE has some guidelines that they would like to put out for students and staff at Illinois schools. And, you know, I was reading the guidelines, and they are really sitting heavy on my heart. And I decided that I was going to walk into the valley unafraid today. And I just wanted to say a few things. And I'm not here to judge anybody. I'm not here to offend anybody, truly. I just wanted to, you know, share some thoughts that I have regarding these guidelines that I've read about. And, you know, I've, I've read that students and staff at schools will be asked to be vaccinated by some schools, and that this is going to be a school-by-school basis. I've read that weekly testing may also be happening for unvaccinated students and staff. And I was thinking about those things, and I, as a teacher, I have concerns. I have some real concerns about, you know, how this is going to affect students and staff mentally. I am concerned that this could lead to shaming in some regard. I've seen public figures in the media shame people for not being vaccinated. And I wonder how that could make students feel if they were, you know, just one or a couple of kids that were, you know, masked in class, but everybody else was not, how they might feel about that internally, how they would feel about that, how they would process that. I really think that that should be left up to families, as a family decision. Those are really hard decisions to make. And people don't, people don't take those decisions lightly. I know they really think about them and what's best for their families. And regarding the vaccine itself, I, again, it's, it's very much still controversial in our country. And our country is very divided. And I don't want to see anybody discriminated against for choices that they would make regarding their own health care. And I could name at least five or six different reasons why an adult or a teenager would choose not to be vaccinated. I can understand why parents might be leery about it. And, you know, just some things that I thought might be helpful to consider, and maybe they would resonate with you, but maybe they wouldn't. I don't know, but I...
It's a very important topic, but you have one.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. I just think that for our community, I would hope that, and I know you're going to be having these conversations. I know you're going to be talking about them. Please consider our school, community, our students, and our staff with the utmost compassion when you make these decisions, so that people don't feel that they're backed into a corner or that they are being discriminated against or shamed into making decisions about their own health care. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Ryan Johnson. Mr. Johnson, I'm also going to have Mr. Dick Ives be my timekeeper. It's okay.
Sure.
Okay.
Thanks for having me. My name is Ryan Johnson. I have three kids. Two are here at Lockport High School and one at Hatley. I'm here to talk about the same thing, the proposal next year for unvaccinated students to continue to wear masks and submit to weekly testing. First, I'm not going to refer to it as a vaccine, because it is not, it does not function like a traditional vaccine. This is experimental. It's emergency use, and it's mRNA gene therapy, and not expected to be fully approved until 2023. We're also talking about a proposal to an age group that is mostly unaffected by this virus, and has a 99.998% survival rate of getting it. This proposal, which only applies to unvaccinated students, would lead you to believe that for the vaccinated students, the shot will guarantee you don't get the virus or transmit it to other people. I'm sure we've all read the stories and known people who continue to test positive after receiving the shot. Recently, in Massachusetts, 4,000 people who tested positive all had the shot. People might say, well, that might be true, but it reduces the severity and the duration, making it less likely you'll pass it on, especially to the vulnerable populations. The opposite will happen. You take healthy people, whether it's teenagers or their parents, and let's assume they don't get the shot. They get the virus, it kicks their butt for a few days, they stay in bed and they stay away from people. That seems ideal in how any other illness or virus would be handled. Now you take a shot that might lessen the severity. Overall, they feel fine. Maybe you're a little tired, but you keep going around with your life, visiting Grandma and Grandpa. This seems like a much more serious problem. But now to the adverse reactions. There have been more deaths associated with the shot than with all other vaccines in the past 30 years combined. all other vaccines in the past 30 years combined. More and more cases of heart inflammation, especially in teenage boys, and other severe and often silenced reporting of other adverse reactions, including paralysis and blood clotting. Again, all this for a virus with a 99% plus survival rate. What risk are we trying to mitigate? Most recently, four British Airways pilots, all middle-aged and healthy, all vaccinated, and all died within days of each other. But the media and the airlines says there's nothing to see here. Masks, they don't work. Many masks will say on the side of the box, "It's not meant to contain viruses." I always liked the analogy of thinking that a chain-linked fence will keep out mosquitoes. Then the health detriments of not getting full oxygen, sitting in a bacteria-ridden mask all day, the nausea, headaches, and lack of concentration. The tests itself are also questionable. The maker of the test has gone on record and said, "This is a very unreliable test and not what it was meant for." And who's making money on these tests? But I won't go into that here. Also, and very important, we need to stop with the ridiculous quarantine rules. With all the students that ended up quarantined last year, how many turned out to have a positive test case? I would imagine none. Never in history have we quarantined healthy children. They also lose two weeks of their education for each instance, since ISBE wants to offer no remote options to kids quarantined that did not take the vaccine but who had the option. This is absolutely disgusting. Many listening on the call here may have been here a few weeks ago on a beautiful Friday night for eighth-grade graduation. Almost all of the parents enjoyed the ceremony without masks in the audience, but the school made 425 eighth-grade graduates sit there outside in masks while distanced during such a happy event in their lives. Now, I am glad these students got to experience a real graduation, and I do give the school credit for that, but it's absolutely criminal, the junior high admin make them cover their beautiful faces. All the masks came right off when it was over and they were taking pictures together. So again, what are we doing and what are we trying to stop? What do you think happens outside of the classroom in school? These kids are maskless during their sports. Many of us are in travel sports, in close contact, hanging out, sleepovers, pool parties. A lot of us are taking our kids to Cubs and Sox games this summer, and stadiums now going to full capacity and no masks.
Sir, you have one minute.
Thank you. So our kids will look up to us and say, "Did our parents fight for us? Did our teachers and administrators fight for us?" And I hope we can say we did. I applaud professional athletes, like Cole Beasley for the Bills, pushing back against the NFL mandate on these shots. He said he would rather retire than be forced to take an experimental injection. But as a more senior player who can comfortably retire, says he's also doing this as a voice for the younger players. Wrapping up, I implore this school administration to make the right decision and go fully mask optional without testing next year. If you've signed contracts with testing companies, cancel them. I hope it won't get this far, but I'm not afraid to take legal action if necessary. I would think either between violations of civil liberties, violations of HIPAA, violations of the Nuremberg Code, or some combination of the three, myself or a group of parents would be successful. But again, I hope it doesn't come to that. All we're asking is for medical freedom and personal choice. These kids have suffered enough the last 15 months and carried a burden they were not meant to carry. Stop this now, unmask these kids, and stop with the medical tyranny. And don't tell me your hands are tied by Pritzker or IDPH. Thank you.
Just need a motion for the approval of the regular meeting minutes and approval of the closed session meeting minutes of May 17th, 2021.
Second?
It's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Dr. Shaw to approve the regular meeting minutes and the closed session meeting minutes of May 17th, 2021. Are there any questions to those minutes? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Stain.
Lewandowski?
Stain.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of our treasurer's report for May 2021. Need a motion for that?
So.
Second?
Again, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to the-
There's only one comment.
I'm sorry.
Sorry to jump in front of your, I just want to draw board members' attention to a very important document that Mrs. Kroy will include this month, next month, and the next month as we get into budget season. And that's the five-year financial projection. And I know you're used to when you see the, the bills payable and the treasurer's report, you know, long lists and columns and numbers. But this is a very important textual document that helps give you a sense of what our finances are looking like five years out, right? So for example, if you look five years out, you might be drawn in 2025 to a $1.25 million deficit. And that's a deficit that, that we would have to manage. That deficit exists based on our commitments to building and operations projects. And so the board would, for example, have to decide, do we sideline those operation projects to avoid that deficit? Do we go into fund balances to fund those operations projects to avoid a deficit? Do we do some kind of financing? Do we just go into a deficit? So it's an important document that we're gonna refer to more in July. We'll refer to it certainly in August, but gives a sense of what the impact of everything that are the knowns and the unknowns that we can determine, you know, at this time. But a really important document and a great job by Mrs. Kroy. So I just want to draw your attention to it. So, carry on, continue.
Okay. It's already been motioned and seconded. No questions then? Further questions? Okay, roll call.
Travis?
Stain.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Stain.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Uh, abstain.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. Thank you. All right, moving on to your superintendent update.
Yeah, you bet. Well, there is a lot going on, looking on the hori-, there's a lot going on and there's not a lot going on, looking, looking on the horizon. But before we do that, you know, I think we do have to get busy thinking about August 2021, but before we sort of move forward with that, I just think it's important to acknowledge some successes from, from this year. And I would invite everyone, you know, when, when we, you know, I know the board, weekly, I've updated you nationally, Will County, our zip codes, and I would just ask everyone to reflect what's brought us to this point, where our COVID-19 numbers in this nation, in our county, in our zip codes are just at a place where we can do what we're doing right now, where, where we're unmasked. And I think just, everybody has to make up her or his own decision about, how did we get to this point? One, I want to celebrate some great partnerships outside of our district. And three, many people partnered with us, but three really important partnerships. Police, the police were just so instrumental on April 12th, when we moved into full, all-in learning. We could not have done it without them. The fire, Lockport Township Fire, a great partnership by really leading the way and running as many vaccination clinics as they did. As you know, we're partnering with Will County right now to provide that. And then, an unlikely partner, but, but amazing partner, Walmart. Without Walmart, really giving up about 200 parking spots in their lot, no charge to us, no charge to students, for about, you know, six weeks, we would not have been able to do what we did. So we're very grateful that they allowed us to, to disrupt their parking lot and their, their operations. You know, at the beginning, last year, in July, we said, we had a couple priorities: safety, equity, learning, flexibility, and communication. I just want to point out a few things. Safety, to me, it is amazing, you know, if we talked about almost 5,000 human beings coming into our district, coming in and out, you know, that's called a town. And our, our transmission rate, our infection rate, we had seven person-to-person transmissions. Our positivity rate staying as low as it did, that's just an incredible testament. We had no one hospitalized in our district. We certainly had no fatalities, as, as did happen unfortunately in, in some school districts. That's, that's something to celebrate. People stayed safe. And, and this was long before vaccinations, we were keeping people safe. Equity, and equity was all about making sure that through this, students had access to education. We went from eight teachers in February who could teach remotely to 274 teachers who can now teach remotely. That's a sea change in any profession overnight, that, that is just absolutely amazing. And then also the idea that we would provide time outside of the classroom. Last year was porter assistance and connection time. You'll hear more about some other components of that coming up. Learning, you'll hear about grades and attendance this year. You know our attendance rate was very high when we were in person. You'll hear about grades. Never before did our staff really realize that, that teaching is actually not a solo act. You really should be doing it in partnership with a team. And that became just so apparent, so much so that when we negotiated this year, it was very valuable to our teachers that they had time to meet a, as teams. And amazing, I think, you know, we, we had an expansive last summer and into the year athletics and activities program, which is all about a kind of learning, too. Flexibility, we really should celebrate our human resources, providing Apex to students who needed a full-time, remote learning option, vaccination clinics, and vaccinating all of our staff, providing that option for them if they sought to, to take it, facilities, operations. And oftentimes, we heard that desire all of us had for consistency, but it was not a year you could be consistent. And I am proud that at, at critical junctures, when we needed to shift into different learning modes to keep learning and equity going, despite the pandemic, we, we were able to do that. And then finally, just communication. Probably the most frequent comment we get is from folks who just feel that communication is steady, clear, transparent, even when they didn't agree with the communication. They felt like they were receiving a pretty steady, steady diet. That is not to say we're perfect by any stretch of imagination. Certainly many things we learned from, and certainly many things that we did not do as well as we would have liked to. But I just think it, it was an amazing year, but it was a year that, that I'm pretty proud of for our staff, our students, our parents to, to weather it. A few things in my superintendent report as we really pivot towards August 2021. First, just want to share with you ISBE, IDPH, and gubernatorial directives. In your folder, there is a letter that one of the organizations we belong to, the High School District Organization of Illinois, has written. It's a draft, so there are just a few typos. It's getting cleaned up. We plan on sending it. Where what we're requesting as superintendents is clearer and better guidance. You know, first and foremost, I think this board knows that many industries are regulated, and we're one of the most highly regulated industries. And we're regulated by state constitution, by the Illinois State Board of Education, Illinois Department of Public Health. And so, for many reasons, legal reasons, liability reasons, those are the guidelines that we do have to follow. The state is putting a strong emphasis right now on full in-person learning. They are limiting the definition of who qualifies for remote learning. We'll have to come back to that, that later. The state is strongly recommending vaccination. But I do want to be clear that we have not talked as a board. I cannot believe that we'll see the state mandate vaccines. So there isn't a conversation on the state level, on the public health level, or on this board of mandating vaccinations. That certainly wasn't what we did with our, our staff, and that's not really what's in line for students either. The state is strongly recommending COVID-19 testing protocols and incentivizing that, because as you know, when we were, went to three-feet separation, we had another set of regulations that for close contact, if it was, if you were within six feet of a positive person, you had to quarantine. And what that led to is about 5% to 7% from April 12th to May 26th of our students having to quarantine for 14 days. That's where we're looking for some better, better guidance. If we have a testing protocol, then we are able to be at three feet and not, not, not worry about that 14-day quarantine for students. Presently, looking into the year, there is a mask mandate for everyone. And that's everybody, vaccinated or unvaccinated. That's where the state is right now, that everybody's wearing masks. And there are obvious concerns about that and questions about that. That's one reason why you'll see in the letter, we want some clarity about that, because that can lead to, you know, all sorts of things. And, you know, in terms of, are we collecting COVID cards? What, what is happening in the relationship there? But right now, the, the plan in the proclamation that you'll probably hear on June 27th is that everybody in the schoolhouse, vaccinated or unvaccinated, will wear masks. Kind of pivoting to S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, we have signed a contract with, with S.H.I.E.L.D. And just to remind the board, this is of the University of Illinois, right now, probably the world's best COVID-19 test. It kept the positivity rate below 1% in a 60,000-person campus, a whole year, if you know anyone who participated in that. It detects COVID within two to three days, and most significantly, it's the only test with the sensitivity that allows a student who tests negative for COVID to return to the classroom and not be quarantined. It also allows us to put our desks closer than, than six feet, to the three-feet distance as well. S.H.I.E.L.D. recommends, depending on the positivity rate, that unvaccinated students are tested once a week, is the protocol. We're gonna test it this summer with some of our, our summer camps. So it's highly sensitive, and the S.H.I.E.L.D. staff, the cost is, is borne by the, the S.H.I.E.L.D. staff. It's S.H.I.E.L.D. staff that do the testing, the collecting, and the reporting to us. Then just important changes, and then kind of one of the most important changes, we're gonna hear from Mrs. Cristofaro and Dr. Huntington, who are gonna assist me with my superintendent report. But there's a draft of proposed schedule for next year, where what we want to do is take some of the lessons that we learned this year, two important lessons. One, the need for students to have time outside of class to access their teachers. Just a simple idea. Almost every teacher who ever taught a class ends the class saying, "Gosh, I just wish I had a few more minutes with that class for some students." And almost every student who's ever taken a class has walked out of class saying, "I wish I had 10 more minutes with my teacher." We found that this year, when we had that kind of time built into our schedules, a powerful engine. And we believe, and district management group agrees, that it's probably one of the reasons why you see the kind of grade results that we have. So bringing that into four days a week, right after period two. And then consolidating on Wednesdays, the team time that became so valuable for teachers to work together to build a cohesive system approach to learning and to curriculum and to teaching, as opposed to an idiosyncratic, entrepreneurial, sort of every teacher, him or herself, approach to, to learning and to teaching. Those are the two features where you'd see a late arrival every Wednesday, with school starting at about 9:45. Let me pause there, because I do want to share with you via Dr. Huntington and Mrs. Cristofaro, as we were doing all of this, you might recall last year, we commissioned district management group to come in and take a comprehensive look at our district, on how do we help students who struggle? And, and believe me, sometimes we have a mythology that, you know, AP students, honor students, A students, they don't struggle. I would say all high school students struggle. At one point or another, if you're not struggling, you're probably not learning. So how do we help students when they struggle in our district? But let me just pause there on, on things I've shared so far, before we, we bring them out for a little longer superintendent report. Any questions about the schedule, S.H.I.E.L.D. testing? We're right now looking, I would say, for most superintendents, we are somewhat frustrated by, by what we haven't received from ISBE. And so we're looking for clearer and better guidance from them.
Question about S.H.I.E.L.D. testing. Is it considered a rapid test?
It is a rapid test. It's, it's a rapid test only in the sense that because there's a second party that has to take it to a lab, that has to test it, you usually get the results about 24 hours later. So, it's a saliva test. All right.
Milo?
Okay. Yeah, we don't usually, Mr. Johnson, take questions during the board meetings, so, and we'll, we'll talk later after, you know, your, a follow-up with you on, on your comments, okay? Any questions from the board? Okay, Dr. Huntington and Mrs. Cristofaro. So as they come up, you might recall that district management groups spend quite a bit of time, and I think, I'm including this in my superintendent report, because I think what is in this report is so significant to the future of our district. It really almost operates like a strategic plan or a blueprint from an independent organization looking in on our district. Take it away.
Good evening. Thank you very much for this time.
Good evening, thank you very much for this time. I don't know, I know some of you were a part of our focus groups when we were doing this study with DMG groups, I I thank you for those of you who had participated in it. And for the rest of you, we're going to share the results that we received from DMG. Just really quickly, I wanted to review kind of our process, you know that we started this in October of 2020. You can see all the little things that we did along the line and today we are kind of here at the develop the district priorities from the findings area. Again, the mythology or the methodology that was used was qualitative evidence with data analysis. So lots of conversations with lots of different people as well as looking at a lot of data that we've I'm going to give Lori the props on there, pulled from a lot of different areas. So they took those data and the qualitative evidence and were able to provide some of these findings. So these were the four areas of strength, we talked about that with you guys last time, so I'm not going to go over those again, you know that we have lots of great things happening here at Lockport. What we do want to do is talk to you about the four opportunities that DMG brought forward from their result. And I'm going to start with Lori.
Next slide.
Yeah, so one of the first recommendations that they made was this ensure that general education teachers are well-equipped to differentiate for all students in the classroom. And how did they come up with this? Well, let's look at the next slide, you can click again, Matt, there should be. Yeah, so you can see through their data analysis that most struggling students spend the majority of their day with the classroom teacher. That's probably not mind-blowing for anybody here, but that's where they are at. And so the question becomes, how does this classroom teacher provide support for all the different kinds of students they see sitting in front of them? So you, Matt, you can click through, yeah, you've seen this before, this response to intervention model and you're going to hear us talk a lot about, it's not just three tiers, it's really this idea of a multi-tiered. How can we support students when they're struggling? Going back one more. But really, you can see here, the idea is that we're helping most of the students in the classroom with the with the classroom teacher, the gen ed teacher. So go on. So this is again, some data that they pulled for us and looked at. And you can see that students who have IEPs, that means they receive special education supports, or students with low-income backgrounds, or students with limited English proficiency are more likely to have grades that are C or below. And so how do we help teachers work to, here's this word again, differentiate in their classroom? So really, teachers can differentiate in three ways, they can differentiate through process, product, or content. What does that mean? If you're giving a reading assignment, right, the teacher could choose to have, everybody reads the exact same thing. Or they could choose, I'm going to scale this differently for different levels of readers. Or they might use some auditory pieces to help the students with their understanding, right, like an audiobook. So that is something about process. Something about product, a teacher could say, I need to see that you understand this primary source we're looking at, the Declaration of Independence. A teacher could say, you can show that to me through a written response, or you can show that to me through drawing a picture or political cartoon, or you can write a song, right? So there's that is something about the product. So these are ways that teachers do this and they have to be, it can't happen every single class period, every single day because they have such diverse learners in front of them. So it has to be really strategic, very deliberate about choosing when to differentiate and how they're going to differentiate for their students in front of them. And so we can see here, this layers in some of the work that we're already doing. Part of that is working with their PLC teams with, which Dr. McBride spoke about earlier. Really working with those teams and discussing instructional strategies they're using. And also, we can layer in some additional PD support for teachers. But I also want to talk about the second bulleted item, which is also something that we're working on implementing for this school year. You can go to the next slide, Matt. So one of the things we can do to help teachers with shifting some practices, learning some new practices, is having coaches. And this tells you about the effectiveness of coaches. So just like coaching a sport, if I'm coaching a basketball team and I identify there's something that my team's weak at, maybe they're weak at making layups, I'm going to think of a strategy, we're going to practice that strategy, then we're going to do it in the game, then we're going to reflect on how did it go? Very similar when you're working with teachers. You look at what what's not going well, or what do we need to help you with? Maybe it's that students need help with reading for inference. What might be some strategies to help the students in your content area really understand reading for inference? And then coming up, planning, doing some resources, putting it in, and then reflecting on it. And so because you can see right here, if I was just going to lecture to teachers about, here's how you teach inference to a whole group of teachers, you can see probably less than 5% of teachers would go back and have a successful experience with it. But with coaching, right, it has a dramatic impact, this is a slide from DMG, really well-resourced, because coaching for the teacher, it's job embedded, it's in the moment, it's professional development, so it's layered in. And so we have three staff members that will be working on literacy coaching for this year, really helping teachers develop some more literacy skills to help those diverse learners in their classroom. How would they do what?
Coach the teacher.
So.
In the moment.
In the, we're going to meet together probably outside of class, right, and we're going to talk about what you see going on with your students, I mean.
Tell you what the teacher's doing.
Or the teacher's going to come to them and say, my kids are not picking up on inference skills, what are some strategies that you can share with me that I could use? Or I remember what actually happened to me, I was teaching an AP class and my students read a portion of the textbook and they did not know what the main ideas were because it was a different kind of writing, so I worked with a coach. Coaches are generally really good at questioning to help the teacher discover what is it that they need to do? And then talking about strategies together to come up with best some best practice for the students in the classroom, thank you for that question.
So now I'm going to speak to you a little bit about this strengthening and systematizing supports for struggling learners. This is an area that I wanted to really kind of stress is not something that's going to happen overnight, right? This is kind of the meat of of what we're going to need to kind of look at and make some determinations and determine how we can support our learners. So when we look at best practices for that MTSS system, one piece that DMG, can you go back one? One piece that DMG talked to us a lot about was this organization and the structure. So how are we going to be able to put a system in place that allows teachers, students, counselors, parents, anybody that has access to a student and a struggling student, what do we do? Right, what's the next step, how do I know where I'm going? And so when we look at and we talk to several teachers and several other groups in our focus group, one thing that we learned was everybody kind of was looking at each other like, who? Who's the person that we go to when this kid is having a trouble, right? Whether it's math, or science, or social-emotional. And so one of the things that we looked at is that organizational and structure piece. And and we feel that our guidance counselors are perfectly situated to be that who, that person that's going to be the linchpin, right? These are the reports that I'm getting, this is what's happening, I can see everything in different areas and I can push in and provide and direct supports and services. So we really feel that, next slide, that we have a lot of things going on for to support our struggling students. But depending on who you're talking to, they might not know, oh, I can put that student in a co-taught class. Or, oh, this person really needs to be connected with their Porter Assistance Time. So there's this kind of moving around, trying to figure out navigating the system. And and that's got to be something that we need to look at and address. So we want to make sure that we're looking at those interventions and making sure that they're solid and that we can take data to see if those interventions are being successful for students, or if they're not, what's next? Next slide, okay, so these are our steps, these are very kind of nicely outlined steps for us to take. And as you can see, there's a lot, it seems like a couple bullet points, but there's a lot of detail in those bullet points. And so as Lori and I have been discussing and and through our use of our PLCs, we really feel like, you know, we've got to get that organization and structure together and then line up those other things, data and assessment and and the implementation and supports as we go through. So we can make sure that we're implementing an MTSS system with fidelity. And again, this is a timely process, this is not going to be up and running next year. We're going to, you know, need to make sure that we're strategically planning to implement these supports and services. So again, future considerations, this kind of outlines more of that other slide that we talked a little bit about, about how we can look at and and things that we're doing, you know, I mean, one of those things, when you have built-in time during the school day, you're going to be able to help a lot of students, and so that's one of their suggestions as well. So I'm going to continue to speak. The next area is just to make sure that we're matching those student needs with the staff that have the expertise. And so we do, we have math and reading specialists that we utilize, and we have special education and inclusion teachers, and we have ELL teachers. And how are we making sure that we're taking these specialists and we are maximizing their impact on students? So we need to look at what kind of training and support that these teachers need. So we're looking at, you know, and adding PD for teachers, both general ed, special ed, and ELL teachers to ensure that we have content area experts and learning experts that can work with students that are struggling moving into those tier two plus and threes levels. And that's just some more. I don't, I won't read it to you.
All right, here is their fourth recommendation, provide proactive, consistent, and systematic social-emotional behavioral support. That's a lot, again, where's their data coming from on this? Well, first of all, it's coming from what we know students are coming to school with this year is very different than what any of us ever experienced in our schooling. And next slide, please. We know from national norms about mental health-related hospitalizations, Dr. McBride has talked regularly at the board meeting and updated you all when the mental health facilities for teens were full in this area during the pandemic on several occasions. Oh, you went too fast. And so SEL, the need for this has increased the importance during this time. So I want to take a second to just explain, what is social-emotional learning? Because sometimes people think social-emotional learning and mental health, these things are the same, but they're not, they're almost like they're on a spectrum. And the hope is that if we help students get better with social-emotional learning, we might intervene before a crisis occurs. So we focus on SEL, on things like self-awareness, which is things like identifying your emotions, recognizing your strengths, self-management, which could be prioritizing, organizing. So even right now, in this moment, you could sit here and think, how am I feeling right now in the board meeting? Am I really engaged and interested, and why am I feeling that way? Or am I feeling angry and frustrated, why am I feeling that way? And that's really what we want to help students be aware of in the moment, how can I set myself up for less stress by managing myself better? And how can I be aware of of my emotions and maybe go to an adult for help if I recognize that something is, it seems not to be on? So the benefits of social-emotional learning, which again, our classroom teachers need to be ready to talk about self-management in the classroom. And I bet Ms. Baumhardt does it as students enter the room, she probably tells them what they're going to do for the day to really get them set in that moment. But the benefits are overall improved relationships, academic performance will improve, decline in anxiety. So that's why we engage in this work. But also that work and that item that they said, here's an opportunity for you really to grow and help your students circles back to something Angela was talking about.
So as you can see, this is a beautiful little graphic here that DMG gave us, it's a puzzle, right? So we have all these great pieces that are kind of out there doing their thing. How are we going to put those pieces together in order to make sure that we are creating that comprehensive MTSS system? Again, a process that will take some time, we've been super fortunate, our PE department has been way ahead of the curve. And now we need to get that same language in a lot of our other classrooms as well. So that professional development piece as part of an MTSS system is our next role. And as you can see, you know, we have some of these things partially in place already, so we're we're in a good, good place. We've just got to make it, formalize it and and systematize it.
And and so we said, again, we keep saying this, that this will take time as well as we want to take care of the social-emotional well-being of our students, we want to take care of our staff's social-emotional well-being and really consider what where we're going next year, and then where we go the year after that, and the year after that, as we work to build this system. So on the next slide, there are four questions that we posed here for the board. You can read them, I'm not going to ask you to answer them all, in fact, I'm going to give you some think time too. So I'd love for you to pick out maybe one of the questions that you might be willing to respond here to. Go ahead.
Do you have a timetable, you said that this would take time, so I was wondering if you guys had like a plan, like a timetable specifically?
It's a, it's a great question, it's a similar process to a strategic plan process. So we would be hopeful that we would be moving through setting systems up, what were you saying, three to four-year kind of timeline as we build different capacities where we could say, this is it, this is our system. We're not going to wait three or four years to implement things, but we're going to be looking at how we can support and structure things. We can't train every teacher and every SEL activity in in a month's time, so it does take time over.
Have it written down, like somewhere, so that I can like see it in more detail as to what the timetable would be?
I love a good manual, I do. And and that's our hope is to be able to be able to provide these materials and supports for anybody who walks into the room. But as far as do we have a start-to-finish outline, not yet, that's part of the planning process.
And that's what I would say, so we'll come back to these questions, we actually put them on a last slide, but if there's anything that's really you want to push forward with. But we did want to share with you and 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 this is really taking these recommendations, so we just got them in May, right? And they were presented to our guiding coalition. And so it's really now the work of the guiding coalition to start thinking of that plan that Mr. Navarro is talking about, right, like what does this look like in one year, what are we going after, what can we work on, what can we add on? But it's an idea of a continuous improvement cycle.
I just want to point out, oh, sorry.
Really good question about a timeline, almost a timeline is already rolling in that, you know, the the proposed direction of instituting, you know, two recommendations here. Time for teachers and students to have access outside of class built into the school day. And then also time weekly for professional learning community teams to meet. But the first part about this, before we start getting that whole timeline rolling out, is to have an understanding with the board, really, this very simple thing. So what really this proposes is that the focus of this district should be on struggling students. And really, the very first thing that we should do is make sure that that's understood by the board, it's supported by the board. I I would argue. Struggling students, because what I would argue.
But then they just, but then they just say that we can consider most students struggling, because you could have some AP students who.
I I I would, and and to put a finer point on that, Lillian, what I would say is that specifically students by any kind of calculation who are sort of, if you use the measure 35th percentile to 50th percentile, DF, right? That is actually the area where if we want to advance our our achievement, anywhere from the SAT to college and career readiness, those are really the students whose achievement we have to work with the most. Those are the students that the greatest need. And the key thing here is if you go back to what DMG noted is, very high-skilled teachers, very passionate, very competent, very capable, great results. But the key word in here is a system. And high schools very quickly become small tribes, two buildings, separate programs, 10 departments, different grade levels, different courses in those grade levels. And people very quickly get into silos, but they forget that what a student really experiences is when they walk in the door, they experience a complete. they experience a complete day. And the more disconnected their teachers might be, the more confusing their experience might be. And really what DMG is suggesting is threading those seven teachers. What do those seven teachers have in common? If you're a student moving through the day, what are the common touch points? And is there a common way that each of your teachers handles you struggling? Or as a student, you have to navigate the adults. You have to figure out every single teacher and their differences, which as students who struggle more and more, that becomes harder and harder for them. So that's just a kind of a key, the key start off point that you mentioned, Zion, is, you know, getting the board's support for this direction, really. So I'm sorry to interrupt you, Dr. Huntington.
No, that's fine. You know, I was talking about how we use this, you know, we've been talking for probably 20 minutes now. The guiding coalition had this data and this information broken down over four hours. So there was a lot of very detailed information that they received that we tried to give them that information so they can start kind of helping guide this process because we need them to be involved as well. And so we're looking at, you know, what DMG did and what the guiding coalition kind of talked through. And so they were all on a Zoom chat and were asked this question, right? So we're not going to read this to you, but Lori and I felt that there was one or two points that the guiding coalition came forward that we just wanted to highlight. And mine was, you know, as the teachers and the staff that were on the guiding coalition were talking about, one of the major things is they talked about is they're just not sure where to go with struggling students. And so that came forward with the information from the qualitative aspect of the DMG interviews. And then Lori wanted to.
Yeah, so I think this idea of having a clear system, this MTSS system where people know what do I do next is so important, but it also hinges on the work of our PLC teams, our teacher teams working together on that differentiation and talking about how are we going to help these kids in the classroom? Do we go to the next level? And that brings up our packed time or the time in the day where the students can get extra help and how our PLC teams will be facilitating putting students into those spaces to receive the extra support that they need. So really, those are key pieces of this work as we move forward. So this, on the guiding coalition team, there were building-level administrators, counselors, deans, screen was on there, teachers, general ed teacher, special ed teacher. Who am I forgetting?
Department chairs.
Department chairs. So it was a nice cross-section. So if you remember, back to our, I think we put it the last slide.
Yes, we did make it the last slide.
There you go. There were our questions that we wanted to ask you. We've already had a couple of questions, but anybody want to respond to any of these prompts? Yeah, Mr. Ives.
One of the questions, and I think it's always been my perception here as a parent and on the school board, that, you know, you talk about, you know, they were commenting that we didn't have the structure per se. But I've seen many times examples of teachers and students. You talked about, you know, into the coaching side of it where, okay, you have these three children, three kids in the classroom, and they don't all learn the same way. One may need a little more time for the testing. And that was my daughter when she was here. And it was a, so it was ongoing. So is the result of what they've seen is that we don't have a big structure? Individual teachers were already doing that? And they want to see a more cross-the-board structure? Because it's definitely was, has been going on here for quite some time.
Number one, we have enthusiastic, capable teachers.
Oh, no question.
No question. But when it comes time to a tier two, tier three interventions where we really need to wrap around services for kiddos, we're not able to access that data because this teacher might have done this, and this teacher might have done this, and this social worker might have done this. And it makes it very difficult to.
So we need to assimilate it together because it's happening. But, you know, and then teacher A can benefit from teacher B because hey, I was already doing this and this worked for me.
Right, absolutely.
Right. Okay. So it's more of a structural thing. It's not like starting over.
No, not at all. Not at all. Because Matt, if you go back to that slide that they presented in the beginning of the strengths, you bring up a very good point, Mr. Ives, that it's way at the beginning.
Slide two.
You bring up a really good point that the high lever is that if if all teachers are connected along that structural, so that the experience for any struggling student is a more consistent experience and less left up to the luck of I got this teacher or I got that teacher. You exactly hit the nail on the head of teacher A and B and C and D are speaking a similar language that's understood by each other, by the student, then the system has far more efficiency, far more understanding. It takes, teachers like Mrs. Baumhardt and says there is a system beyond your classroom because we've given her X amount of students and X amount of time daily. And she could probably share with us many times where she said, but what about beyond that? The needs of this student go beyond that, right? So what is beyond that? And so it is not, you know, reinventing wheel, very good point.
This is probably one of my favorite presentations so far, being on this board. I'm like ready to jump out of my seat because I just, I love every single thing about this. Because I think Luanne and I were in the DMG question session together. And I was like, where are they going to go with this? And this is just phenomenal. So I'm so excited to see what happens to this.
It's a good time to acknowledge they're very modest. They're not going to say it themselves. But this really has been the work of Dr. Huntington and Mrs. Christopher really all year. And also what I appreciate is so typically with DMG, it's the director of special ed. And any representation from regular education is really absent from the process. And it was important to you, when we talked about this, you said, let's look at all struggling students. And I think looking at our most struggling students in particular because they're the most sensitive, right? To a lack of a system that can be a high-leverage activity. And really back to a comment that Dr. Huntington made, this focus is a strategy. And it's a long-term strategy to really say that we're going to judge our litmus test of our skill primarily by those students who experience the most academic difficulty. Generally, our students who are advanced placement or honors, and I'm saying this generally, are highly resourced, highly successful, have figured out schooling, and in their own way have a number of resources that we've given them as a district. Generally, students who are below the thirty-fifth percentile on any skill have a lot of resources wrapped around. But so students right in the middle at that fiftieth percentile that sometimes are a fifty-fifty proposition. They exceed state standards or grades or not. And we're trying to make that more predictable in a good way. It's more predictable that they're going to expand their skills and their achievement.
Yeah, I like that. Page seven. That was interesting slide, the one about the classroom teacher struggling.
Yeah, the how the classroom teacher does spend the most time with the students. And so the more resources we can give those teachers to implement those strategies within their classroom, the more successful kids will be. Because they're with them the most of the day, yeah.
And the message here that DMG, and I've been part of a DMG study before, where the conclusion was not as enthusiastic about the teaching staff. But what we're trying to exploit here is that we have a tremendous lever with, right off the bat, DMG has detected that we have a very strong teaching staff. But not only a strong teaching staff, they describe them as a very committed teaching staff, committed to purpose. So the strategy really is to look first and foremost at the classroom where students spend the most amount of time. And our experience has been teachers are saying, hey, hey, more. You know, help me, I want to do a better job. Provide me more to do that better job in my classroom. And we're really trying to leverage that spirit and that skill.
We're excited.
Very.
So are we.
We look forward to hearing about it.
Right, absolutely.
And Zion, Mr. Navarro, really, you know, the next stage will be timing this out. You know, as we get your questions, we work on this. Thank you for the great job. You guys did a great job steering this, you know, really outstanding, great investment. And that is my superintendent's report.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our consent agenda items from number two to number thirteen. I just need a motion for those.
I need to approve consent agenda items two through thirteen as written.
Okay.
Motion by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Ives to approve consent agenda items number two to number thirteen. Are there any questions to any of those? Hearing none. Roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Okay, next we need, I need a motion for the approval of salaries, fringe benefits, and work policy tier books. I can make that motion.
Second.
It's been motioned by Lopez Caniva, second by Dr. Shaw to approval of salaries, fringe benefits, and work policy tier books. Are there any questions to those? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Next, I need the approval of licensed administrator contracts for the 2021-2022 fiscal year.
So moved.
Sorry.
All right, it's been moved by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to that? Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Okay, next I need the motion for the approval of salaries for non-licensed, for non-licensed director salaries for the 2021-2022 fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Travis and seconded by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to that? All right, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Next, I need the approval of salaries for non-licensed employees not covered by collective bargaining agreements for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. I can make that motion.
Second.
It's been motioned by Lopez Caniva, second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to that? Hearing none. Roll call. Navarro?
Obstein.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Okay, next I need the approval of the bus driver's salary schedule for the 2021-2022 fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to that? All right, roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, next I need the approval of the miscellaneous pay rate schedule for the 2021-2022 fiscal year.
So moved.
And I got, all right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to that? All right, roll call. Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Obstein.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Okay, next I need a motion for the approval of a superintendent's contract extension. There is a language that we have that I have to read. And it does state that the board proposes a new multi-year contract for employment for Superintendent Robert McBride. This new multi-year contract begins on July 1st, 2022, or it should be 2021?
The way they had to write it was 2021.
Yeah, I think so. It's 2021 and expires on June 30th, 2025. It establishes a base salary of $211,680 as approved by the Board of Education in April 2021. It establishes performance goals for the superintendent. The multi-year contract indicates that the superintendent may receive salary adjustments annually at the board's discretion. It also establishes benefits for the superintendent. Just need a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and seconded by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to that? All right, hearing none. Roll call. Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Congratulations, Senator Navarro.
Thank you very much. What a pleasure to serve you for four more years. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks for this all, all right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the work and appreciate the community and working with all of you sincerely. It's hard work.
All right, policy consideration.
Okay, policy consideration. So this is really up for some discussion. This is a piece of current ISBE guidance. And again, we don't know if this will shape-shift or change. So I've shared with the board, we fully expected on June 11th to have a comprehensive set with Phase Five of guidance. And actually, if you look at Phase Five, we don't have much. We don't have much to go on. But remote learning, so I'll just try to kind of be brief here. What I'd ask board members to do is set aside homebound learning. That has not changed. Dr. Huntington does a great job, our school counselors. If a child requires homebound learning for whatever reason that the student physically, mental health-wise cannot attend school. So that stays in place under school code. That has not changed. Yeah.
Just to clarify, homebound learning is for people who are expected to be like at home for a majority of a school year, right?
It's not intended to be like the majority of an entire school year. It's intended to be temporary. It's generally connected to physical health, mental health for a duration of time. And it also, to qualify for it, has to have the appropriate documentation. That hasn't changed throughout the pandemic. We have an affirmative responsibility of a student for medic, let's just call it medical reasons, cannot attend school. And homebound is not intended to be a whole year. It's not intended to be multi-year. It's intended to address that particular issue at the time and the documented reason why a student can't physically be in school. So that school code has not changed one bit at all. Then there is school code, which is school code basically 10-30. And 10-30, in the pandemic, established remote learning for all learners. That we had to affirmatively have a program of remote learning for all learners. So last year, we provided full remote learning all year through Apex. Or when we were in hybrid, we had asynchronous learning and a variety of different types of remote learning. There's a draft resolution out by the state superintendent, which the plan is to release that draft resolution likely June 27th because that's when the current disaster proclamation expires. Many people believe that the governor will not renew the emergency disaster proclamation, and the state will announce its stand on August 21st. Part of the prediction about why we're not getting so much from the state right now is Chicago Public Schools have not adjourned school yet. Tomorrow is their last day of school. 10-30, remote learning for all will expire. Ten dash thirty, remote learning for all will expire. And the state has introduced that the only students under, under ten dash thirty that would qualify for a remote learning program would be students who cannot qualify for a vaccination and are under a quarantine order from a local public health or state public health. But there is a third piece, ten dash twenty-nine in school code, which is policy six colon one eighty-five, which is a policy you adopted at your May meeting in twenty nineteen, which authorizes the superintendent to establish a remote learning program. You are able, as a local school board, to make a determination to direct me, and this is a first reading and maybe a discussion, to, to amend this language, because there's right in the very top, and we put this in your folder for easy access, just a paper copy. It reads, "The superintendent shall develop, maintain, and supervise a remote educational program consistent with Illinois ICS five ten dash twenty-nine. The remote educational program," and here are some of the key words that are not yet defined, "if we so choose to," "shall provide an opportunity for qualifying students." To participate in an educational program also not defined. So this board could identify qualifying students and could determine what that program is. Your, your two most likely candidates would be, I believe we will have families that will come forward and say, "I have a situation not in that state definition that precludes me from coming to school. A medical condition myself, a medical condition in my home of an elder or a parent. I don't want to come to school for a semester or a period of time." I also believe quarantine, the ten or fourteen-day quarantine will be less this year, but I believe it still might exist, where we'll have students out for a period of time of ten to fourteen days. That might be another group. So let me pause there and just check for understanding, because what the board would have to discuss and eventually direct, we could come back next month either with no revisions to this policy. You're not going to direct me to use this policy. Or you are going to direct me to use this policy, and you would like to see what, what we would propose and my team would propose in terms of qualifying students and a remote program. So let me just pause there. That's a lot to take care of.
How do you differentiate, so it says here, educational program outside of a school? Does this mean that it has to be an electronic program? How does that, how is it differentiated? For example, if we're outplacing a student who maybe has an IEP, is that a consideration or is this strictly?
Right, this is strictly remote.
Okay.
So it's strictly referred, so it, it doesn't include, that's a great question, doesn't include the process that we use where we have, for example, a student with an IEP, we don't have the services that that student needs, and we're gonna have that student go to someplace like SEAL. That, that, that has the services.
This is more when we deal with the American school?
Yeah, this would be like Apex. You know, we provided a full semester of Apex for students who last year selected. They, they said, "I'm not coming to school at all. I don't want to participate in hybrid or in-person learning at all." And that was during the pandemic. Ten dash twenty-nine, if, if you ask me to come back to, if you ask me to amend this policy and bring back a revised policy, would permit, for example, Mrs. Johnson offering that, and we would have to define who qualifies for that. You know, who, who would we say as a district is a qualifying student for Apex?
Didn't we have some, some criteria for that?
We, we did have some criteria this current year. We'd have to establish that criteria and present it to you.
Okay, reestablish it.
So, I guess the other question is, the way this reads, it says, "Provide instructors that meet teacher qualifications." So is this mandating that we provide teachers?
Right, this would have to be licensed credential teachers. One reason, this is one reason why we didn't simply, for example, any student who participated in Apex, we didn't simply have those teachers, those students go off to Apex. You actually approved hiring our own teachers to steward their participation in Apex. So they had a licensed lockport teacher working with them on Apex. There is also an attendance requirement that students would continue to have to get five hours of instruction daily. So we would, we would have to roll that into the program as well and make sure that that's happening if, if we do do that. So really, the question before the board is, do you want to activate this policy? And if you want to activate this policy and make remote learning available to certain students, we would come back next month with two definitions. You know, who do we see, who would we recommend to you as qualifying students based on a year's worth of experience? And what would be the educational programs we would establish based on a, a year's worth of experience? Knowing that we, we will likely have families that will not feel comfortable coming back to school, regardless of the right structure and systems, regardless of vaccination, not vaccination, mask, non-mask, knowing that we, I hope, don't have as high numbers of students on quarantine, but will likely have students on quarantine, because our expectation is about sixty percent of the student body will be vaccinated and about forty percent of the student body will not be vaccinated.
How many, how many students participate in Apex?
About three hundred, second semester.
Across all grades?
Mm-hmm.
Do you think that number will be above the three hundred?
I think that number coming into this year will be much lower, will be significantly lower. Mrs. Christopher had a focus group of Apex students, many of whom are, are feeling safer, looking forward to their students going back, full in person, saw Apex as a temporary solution. Most likely, families that, that would advocate for Apex would be families who either the child has a medical situation, for example, the child has a medical situation that, that doesn't disqualify them from vaccination, but that the family's concerned about that student either being vaccinated or coming into a situation where they could contract COVID, for example. The family's making that, that decision, that discernment. And then the other population is any, any group of individuals on quarantine. Now, right now, our numbers, we believe these are very crude. We have nothing but gut instinct to go on that about sixty percent of our students will be vaccinated. That sixty percent will not be required to quarantine. So that takes off the board quite a bit, but of the forty percent that it'll select not to be vaccinated, I can imagine some of those students might have to either do a ten-day or fourteen-day quarantine, if they have a close contact. So what would we provide for them? Pre-quarantine, we packaged up some papers, sent it to guidance, and hoped it got home, rather than providing remote learning for those students. But we've gained a, a fair amount of expertise in how to do this. So probably some direction I would need from the board tonight is, if, if you would like to see a proposed revision, if, if the board feels strongly that, that, that the state's definition is the definition you would stick with, and anything we would bring back to you would be a draft. You are, you are not voting on a policy tonight. Okay, I would assure you of that, that that is not what you are doing.
I would like to see what you guys come back with.
Revised one.
You know, your proposal.
Your proposal.
Is there, is there a different opinion?
I'd like to make actual proposal first.
You'd like to see something kind of written out?
Something written down, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Lewandowski, yeah?
Yes, I'd like to see a full open, no mask requirement, no vaccination requirement at all.
Right, and we don't, you know, the state does not have a, a vaccination requirement. I can't even imagine, right now, that's not even on the horizon. And individual school boards are not empowered to, to do that as well, you know, to make a vaccine mandate. You know, like I mentioned earlier, the state right now, in the declaration that you're gonna hear probably on June twenty-seventh, is gonna say that we're all going to have to mask. And then we'll be back as a board to trying to decide, you know, much like we did through this, the course of this year, where do we stand with, you know, state protocols and state guidelines, right? So I will take this back. We'll work with our team. We'll bring, bring back an idea of a proposal for you next month, which would probably be a first reading. I would probably not even have you vote at that time, you know, unless you feel like there's been a due first reading and second reading.
Visual scenarios.
Yeah, and I, and I will start in your board updates, just giving you some suggestions. Great.
I mean, but that, I mean, you're talking about a first reading, that's July.
Right.
You're only gonna have, you know, less than a month after that, that school's gonna start.
Right.
I'm not sure how long we can.
Yeah, you can't, you can't take that long.
We gotta get this side in August and go, well, you're not gonna do this.
And, and that's why I would use your update to start seeing what we're thinking about.
Yeah.
Because you might be in a position where this is a first reading, July is a second reading, and you might feel confident moving forward or not moving forward with, with using policy six colon one eighty-five.
When it, when you have a tentative conceptual design to the proposal, can we see it prior to the meeting?
You absolutely can.
And this can make it more productive.
Right.
You know, because, you know, like we do other things where we may give you questions, and then you come and address them here. I'm just worried that we're gonna, we're gonna be.
We're gonna run out of time. Right. And, and that's exactly what I have in mind, Ms. Ives, is using our board update as, as a time for you to see drafts.
Yes.
And thoughts before July because of the tight timeline and the lack of current guidance we have on this. And then also, board members know, you know, directing your questions about that directly to me.
Yep.
So there isn't any kind of outside of board discussion about, you know, outside the board meeting, the public board meeting, discussion about policy.
Right.
Right. Mr. Navara, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, technically, we can decide in August. We would just really overcomplicate things.
Yeah, it would, you technically could, you're right. And it, it probably would not give us an opportunity, if we wait all the way till August, to communicate to the community the options that they have.
Yeah, I think it would do, you would be making like a lot of people confused as to what exactly our official policy is, especially it's, since our next meeting is how many days before school starts?
In the July meeting, it's about four weeks.
Or August.
And then the August meeting, I believe, is on the day of the first day of school.
Really?
Right.
School already started. We have to, we have to have, parents, you can't wait that long.
Yeah, you'll, you'll have to decide how you feel about six colon one eighty-five.
Yeah, you can't wait, we can't wait that long.
And then, you know, the board knows that sometimes when we've been under the gun, I know this is everyone's favorite, but sometimes we had a special meeting.
Here we go.
We will work diligently to avoid that for you.
Are we, are we able to approve policy at our board meeting? Is that considered?
It is a board meeting. So if we stick with the August seventh date, you can, that's an open meeting, and we could have policy on your agenda. And at least right now, that meeting, I don't, don't plan on confidential items unless, as we plan that over the summer. So that would be another time that you could, you could make some decisions. If we, if we keep it that August seventh date, yeah.
Let's shoot for, for July. Just looking at the time.
Got it.
Okay. All right, next.
Making policy as you're playing golf.
It's playing golf.
All right. All right, next we have public comments on topics not listed on the agenda. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics not listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the topic they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. At this point, there is none. All right, moving on to our information report, our principals' report.
All right, I am not going to read the voluminous principals' report, including discipline, to you. You might notice that our principals are not here, and that is because I have encouraged our staff and our administrators to rest like champions. This is just a, a season where, where many people have not taken time with their families since March twenty twenty. And being, being wary that as much as we might want to think that the pandemic is over, I think, you know, new work is on the horizon, like what we just talked about. So making sure that our team and our leaders are fully rested, so both Dr. Green and Dr. Green are taking some vacation time with their families, and both, you know, would have been happy to zoom in, but I think when you take that time, you should be really good at that. Do, do that well. Few things that they highlighted on their behalf, what a spectacular graduation, you know, I, 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 I think it'll make Mr. Bartley maybe a little bit nervous, but outdoor graduation, very popular. And just as popular is people sparring over whether we should do two ceremonies with less traffic or do everybody together in the future. So we will have to talk about that. People liked, oddly enough, I got a lot of feedback that people liked having two with less traffic. You know, the principals highlighted great activities towards the end of the year, science club, student equity action, band and choir horticulture, and those activity areas, incredible accomplishments. And then also, we, you know, I've been doing this for a long time with athletics, and we just had a high watermark in athletics. It seemed everywhere I looked, we were in a sectional final, super sectional final, went to the state meet in, in, in boys volleyball, the surrogate wrestling meet, we qualified state meet, we qualified eight wrestlers in, in that. Coach Josh Oster reached two hundred single meet wins. We sent track and field down, girls and boys, to state. We probably have one of the top hurdlers in, in the state, even in the country. Gabe Zaco finished in second in both the hundred and ten and the three hundred meter, meter hurdles, very challenging. And as a fan of track, those times were lightning fast. So just so many good things at the end of the year, really, that went on. You can see discipline. You know, as masks some, come off, we're assured that all of our friends, like norovirus and colds and strep will come back. And back all in, as Mr. Bartley knows, also means that, that some of our discipline changes too. We, we get back to some things. So you can see that we still had no ID, tardy to school, some of our electronic device were our major infractions. I was pleased to see in the last six weeks, and, you know, Mrs. Green can comment on this, some of those things that you just really don't want to see in schools were, were not part of the scene. And so we'll see where that goes, where, where that, that, that lands. Any questions?
One of the things I, I think we should recognize is that during the month of June, typically, everything that was going on in June is already over.
Right.
And the administration, the staff, and particularly the students deserve a lot of credit. Graduation was over, they still committed, they, they, they held their heads high, they, they, they were proud voters out there, and they, not an easy thing to do in the middle of your summer when you're gonna go June. They stayed with it, they stayed committed.
Absolutely.
When I was reading this, I couldn't have been more impressed.
It was very impressive that, that, you know, the very, the very next Monday after graduation, this campus looked like a regular school day.
Yeah.
And it's been that way really up until last week, last Friday, when we were in the state meet in volleyball. Very impressive. And now kids coming back for camp, right? Both in activities and athletics.
Yes.
It's a neat, it's a neat piece of recovery. Attendance, you can take a look at attendance in student enrollment. We had our first major dip in about the last three weeks. We went down to eighty-eight percent attendance from our historic ninety-three to ninety-five percent. As was mentioned earlier in the public comment, quarantine was very, very difficult, very challenging. That's one of those areas that we are looking. As you know, I was in a consortium of superintendents who wrote a letter to the state asking for a reconciliation between two guidelines. One guideline that said it was safe to seat students three to six feet apart, another guideline that said if you were closer than six feet to a student with COVID, you had to quarantine. So as the board knows, we had about five to seven percent of our students, about anywhere between two twenty and three hundred students on a fourteen-day quarantine. And it is accurate, we've shared our data with the state, that over the course of this entire year, we probably had to put about three thousand incidents of fourteen-day quarantine, and we have no known active COVID cases out of those quarantines. So we're really asking for a reconsideration of that, especially at the high school level, just because of the kind of system that we are. So that is the principal, unless I can answer any questions. A great, great point, Mr. Ives.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our district reports. Now it's our information reports, restorative practices. We have a handout here.
You are up. And, and board members do have a handout and some samples, and some more samples are coming. And this is Matt, Mr. Matt Bartley, Assistant Principal, and Mrs. Travanna Green, who's been with us, an alumni, but who's been with us for five years. It's her fifth year in the district in, in COVID years. It's her first year, but she's, she's, you know, well past tenure now, right?
For sure.
Well, I also want to thank you for this, this time to present you some more information on restorative practices. Well, I also want to thank you for this, uh, this time to present you some more information on restorative practices. I actually find it pretty convenient, uh, you know, tonight that we get to talk a little more about, um, restorative practices after the presentation, um, the DMG presentation, talking about, uh, MTSS and, you know, what we need to do to help struggling students with their academic achievement. As we know, okay, kids that struggle with discipline tend to struggle with academic achievement. Um, and I love the, the, the graphics on the presentation that showed the little puzzle pieces with the deans, counselors, social workers, because, you know, those, those are the individuals that are driving forces uh, behind the restorative practices. But does, but it's not limited to, you know, the, the classroom teachers that are doing it, um, in the trenches in the classroom. Uh, so I just wanted to, uh, uh, you know, introduce you guys to, uh, uh, some of the, the stuff on the handout, um, what are restorative practices, the core values of restorative mediation, stages of restorative practices, and then kind of direct you to, uh, Mrs. Trevana Green here, uh, who's gonna, you know, highlight some of the things that we're doing here at Lockport. Um, and a couple of things that we decided to highlight with you, because embedded in, in those pieces are, are several things that we're doing with restorative practices. And one's going to be our re-engagement conference, and, uh, and, and that will be on slide six, the, one of the second to last slide, and, um, the very last slide that, uh, just talks about some of the common practices that we use, um, in restorative, uh, you know, justices. All right, so, Mrs. Green?
Yes, okay. So one thing, a question that we always get about restorative practices, is it going to take away the alternative assignment? So alternative assignment would be a suspension, uh, detention, um, a BIC, and it does not. It's actually added to that piece so that they can restore the relationship or the harm that they have done. So in that, the re-engagement conference plan, that sheet that I handed out, um, you will see that if you go to, yep, just stay there, um, it can consist of the student, the parent, the counselor, the social worker. Um, there could be other people, such as if there's a drug offense, we could have somebody from Rosecrans come in and help us with that plan for the student to be re-engaged to school. And as you will see, we go through a number of things. So tutoring supports, um, we may, um, readjust their schedule, things of that nature. And you will also see that we all initial off on it, and we're able to go back and revisit that plan, because the plan for the follow-up is the most important part, um, not only of just coming up with the plan, but the follow-up. Um, there's also a reflection piece that we do in the BIC room that, um, Jamison, Oster, Dana Capco, and Eileen Sullivan work directly with the child, um, to also follow up. And that kind of goes hand in hand with if we need to follow up with them again in several steps. So they could be saying a social worker, they could be saying a counselor, um, they could come back to us as a dean. We don't want it ever to be that we're just suspending them and then we're done with them. We want to follow up and make sure that they've learned from what it is, they've acknowledged it. And in that acknowledgement piece, that doesn't mean necessarily that they're apologizing or that they say they're sorry. All they're doing is acknowledging that they've affected not only themselves, but the community that they live in.
I think that, uh, acknowledgement piece, um, is, is huge and, and something that, um, we look to extract from a student with those think sheets, um, you know, that we, we shared with you and that, uh, we use at our behavioral improvement center, because, um, that gives us feedback where that student is, where their mindset is, just the way they answer those questions. It could tell us, hey, you see how we answered this question? We definitely need to follow up with this student, talk to our social worker, guidance counselor. Um, he needs a, a little more support. Where other students, you know, um, they just hit it on the money. They show remorse, um, they have a plan, so they don't make the same mistake, uh, you know, twice. Um, and, uh, we're hoping that, you know, as we embed these restorative practices in our classrooms and our, and our dean's office, our social workers, our guidance counselors, and a lot of our, our SEL components in the classroom, um, that, you know, our culture and climate just continues to, to strive, and we can build on it.
Who, who wrote this? Who, who like wrote the questions on here and how this is formatted?
Absolutely. So Jamison Oster worked with the BIC team, and then the deans also saw it.
So to, also to give you some background on that, um, I know when I came in on it in my first year as a dean, I, I did a PD development with, uh, Mrs. Trish Sermon, and, uh, we had a, a book. Um, I forget the title, uh, Carrots or, or Sticks, something of that nature. And it talked about restorative practices in the classrooms, and it gave examples of think sheets and, and questions that we should be using in the dean's office and as teachers when, 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 and students are misbehaving. And we sort of just modified that and built on that. And, uh, you know, and that's how a lot of those questions were, you know, came, gave to where they're at now.
I thought that restorative practice became a big buzzword in schools as a result of Senate Bill one hundred. And Senate Bill one hundred, some of you may or may know, had to do with, there were a high number of, uh, black and brown students being expelled from school. So it was a way to have steps in between before they came to that ultimate, you're out of the school, you know, some kind of, uh, mitigation in between?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, definitely the, uh, restorative practices, um, you know, the, the professional development, the use of that, um, you know, started to really roll out with Senate Bill. Yeah, and, uh, it, I, the, the funny thing was, is a lot of the, the restorative practices, um, were being used, but I think now, uh, they're, they're just, they're being more recognized and, um, they're, they're directed with a little more purpose, um, rather than, you know, here and there.
So have my rates of expulsion and suspension went down?
Um, our suspension, you know, rates have definitely gone down tremendously this year, in the past year, yeah.
So just to speak on what, you guys can mark this down as like my favorite board meeting ever. So I think that we're, we're, what Luann's going off of is with Senate Bill one hundred, like everything that we've heard tonight from that presentation to this presentation is a proactive approach to addressing concerns with students, whether it's academic, whether it's discipline, things like that. So, um, just in looking at this, Luann, I think that this is just a proactive approach to kind of get students to understand their situation better and the effects that they've had on their peers and their community before it gets to that level of the expulsion.
I got that.
Yeah. So, um, but with this re-engagement conference plan here, so this is any time a student has been removed from the, you would do this anytime a student's been removed from the learning environment. So this wouldn't go for, you know, no IDs or just detentions, BIC?
Yes.
Things like that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I appreciate with restorative practices, there's something really important that Mr. Bartley and, and Mrs. Green said, you know, the, the idea is, a- anytime we do something that we're not proud of, that we wish we didn't do, I, I find that students, no matter what, know that that was something that they weren't proud of, know that that was something they shouldn't have been done, but might be at a stage in their life that that's hard emotionally to come to grips with it. So first, we have to restore ourself to ourself. We have to get whole ourselves. Then we have to get whole with the people around us that we might have harmed. Then we have to get whole with the community. And, uh, to your point, Mrs. Johnson, Senate one bill, Senate Bill one hundred also acknowledged that a punishment does not in and of itself do that. Um, and working with teenagers, um, I think zero tolerance is something you heard very much, um, for quite some time. And that operated on the, the presumption that we could punish our way out of teaching new behaviors. And that, that just wasn't the case. Um, all the work here, the really fine work here is based on a psychological principle called rational situation analysis that doesn't everybody deserve a pause between the emotion you're feeling and walking back through what happened, why did it happen, what did I do, what could I have done differently? Just a psychological, um, approach to get those different levels of restoration. Because ultimately, um, to, to change behavior, what we want is a change. And we know change is hard for human beings, you know, much less people, much less children, right? And that's ultimately what, you know, um, Mr. Bartley, and Mrs. Sermon, uh, Mrs. Green and her dean colleagues are, are really going for, is to see that change.
Can I ask one more question? Are all of these team members required to meet after, so a student goes to BIC, comes back? Student, the parent, the dean, everyone?
Yeah, so, so typically, you know, basically Google, Google Calendar invite comes out and for the re-engagement conference, the counselor, social worker, uh, dean, um, AP are, are present unless something, you know, you know, is just keeping them from that meeting. Um, and then we go through, the dean leads and facilitates that meeting. Um, great, I, I just found that it's been an outstanding way to, to build those relationships with those households, um, because everyone's learning and, and everyone's working as a team to, uh, you know, you know, for a common goal. And I think the, the, the parents and the families are really appreciating the compassion, I think it shows, really making those connections, because, you know, when they come back, there was a time where, a, a period of time, they weren't in class, they weren't in school, which, you know, I think we all know, is the most serious thing that can happen to a student is them being removed from their classrooms and their education. Um, but during that time, we're doing check-ins. Deans are calling them at home. How's everything going? Are you keeping up with your work? Are you communicating with your teachers? We're communicating with these, these social workers and the guidance counselors. Hey, have you had an opportunity to check in with, you know, you know Johnny and see how he's doing? Um, while he's out of school, you know, re-engagement conference coming up? We want to make sure he comes back, you know, you know, ready to learn and back on track. And, uh, we're just finding a lot of success where the, the turnover rate, where we're not seeing Johnny the, the very next day or, or a week later for the same infraction, it's just not, it's just not happening.
You, and so the parents are, um, suborned with this process and they're engaged in the process?
Very, very. Um, because also, one of the things that we're, we're starting to implement, um, you know, typically with Senate Bill one hundred, um, some of our, uh, you know, resolutions that used to be five days out, ten days out, um, you know, really, uh, don't extend past three days of external. Um, but sometimes the infractions, we feel like we still need some more time with that student um, before, before we, you know, put him back into the classroom. So that's where our Behavior Improvement Center becomes really important, because then we can extend these restorative practices in there. And the parents appreciate that. And sometimes we'll say, hey, depending how he does in the Behavior Improvement Center on this day or this day, um, we're hoping we can maybe get him back in class and, you know, in his classrooms a day or even a two days earlier because of the progress he's making. He was right.
You provide tutors, what else can you?
Sure.
We do.
Yes.
We do.
Yeah, we talk about the tutoring supports, uh, in the re-engagement conference.
I like these, as Dr. Shaw said, I like these, these structures as well. Do you ever get into a situation where you're engaging the parents and the parents? I would think the parents may know that child better than we do. Do they say, do, do they come up and say, hey, what about some alternative other things that'd like to work? Because they said, you know, my child, this, their type of child, this works well. Do they ever bring that into the process and do you accept that?
Yes, and a lot of it sometimes is just like learning styles, or we're talking about it's so difficult. Why does the student usually misbehave or act out? So usually struggling in their social setting or their academic setting, and it's their way to disengage, uh, um, you know, put off, you know, the, 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 the learning element that's so hard for them. Um, and their parents have insight to that, whether it's, you know, maybe just a teaching style of a certain teacher that's just not fitting with that student.
Yep.
Where then, oh, well, we, you know, we can talk to that teacher. And then we kind of, you know, connect and build that web, that community where, hey, we had a great conversation, um, with this family, these parents, these were some suggestions they made. Um, just wanted to let you know, um, I was excited about coming back to your class.
Excellent.
Good.
Have you had, do you have an parent council?
I was like, I'm just, sometimes.
I'm a parent, I could use some.
I was just wanting to say sometimes, but.
Core practices yourself. Yeah, you know, um, I think that's, I think we have great conversations. And, and sometimes they start off rocky.
Right.
And by the end, um, you know, uh, we're, most of the time, we're, we're in a good place and, and working as a team, you know, for, for the ultimate goal.
Well, I was gonna say too, like restorative, when you're at this re-engagement meeting, sometimes you do have to separate and let it cool off, and then the follow-up would be coming back to the table and sitting down and saying, you know, as we're working through it, we've come back to the table, this is what we need to do, this is the goal that we've set, and they come back. And usually, once you give them that cool-off time, they're able to come back and discuss it.
True art of the game. A lot of that timing is really important. Referral comes in.
Yes.
You know, uh, like an infraction that they're mad about and they disagree about. Um, you know, right there in the moment, sometimes isn't the best time to come to a full resolution and, and repair what had actually happened. It's a starting point. Otherwise, it's, if it's, hey, guess what? You have a double detention because electronic device is pregnant. Send them back to class. He's probably gonna get sent back to you in an hour.
Literally.
Literally.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Um, how many students would you say, if you don't have the exact number, just an estimate, um, have bit, have gotten a BIC this year?
This year, um, to be truthful, th- those numbers are, are way down because we didn't have the same amount of in-person learning, because you can imagine, you know, half of the disciplinary infractions that are in our behavioral handbook just simply can't take place because they're not on school grounds. We were dealing with different ones, like I, I refuse to turn my camera off, or, you know, I'm doing something inappropriate in my Zoom meeting, um, or, or typing in something inappropriate. Um, but that exact number, um, no, I, I, I would have to get back to you.
In this discipline report, Mr. Bartley, there were fifteen, and that, that, that's a month.
So a month, yeah. I, I was going to guess, um, you know, probably a half a dozen to a dozen per month this last year, multiply that by, you know, your school year, you know.
How much, how much is the usual people that get sent to BIC, like during, like, pre-COVID?
Well, if you're talking about the number of students or number of days, that's gonna differentiate, um, to different data points, but number of students, I would probably say, uh, you know, typically only about, you know, three to four percent of our students may see, you know, our Behavior Improvement Center. You know, it's typically your at-risk students. One of the things that increases the number of days in our Behavioral Improvements, uh, Center, um, are when students refuse to attend, say, a, you know, a detention. Well, hey, and we start the restorative just all over, and this is still part of the deal, you know? Um, or refuses to go to the double detention. Um, however, uh, it's just longer.
Just longer.
It's just longer in time.
Double the time.
Which, you know, we, a- as a dean's department, we're paying attention to that. We want to try and bring those numbers down. Um, we're, I mean, we would like to eliminate Saturday detention, some of these things maybe in the future, um, you know, when we feel like we're, we're ready to. Some of, you know, those that we just still need to, to use. Still important to have some of those things in place to incentivize behavior. Um, it just doesn't necessarily correct it.
So the thing I appreciate about this is it gives a student group a voice that typically doesn't have a voice. And that's what I really appreciate about this. The other thing, and I know there's probably already plans for this, but a few years down the road, when COVID is not necessarily a major issue, I'd love to see some data to see, like the follow students, just to see the infractions and things like that, so affect something.
Great job. You guys did an awesome job, and thanks for bringing this to us.
Thank you for your time.
We'll, we'll hear more. I'm gonna have to say goodnight, everyone.
Good night.
I forgot what?
Okay. Another information report, the grading report, 2020 to 2021?
Yeah, as Mrs. Christopher comes up. You know, really, I think this grading report, it produces a number of different reflections on our part. And it supports student performance. Two strategies you've heard about already, setting time aside for students to connect with their teachers outside of school. And then also, teachers coming together to work in teams to really affect instruction and achievement. And it's, some of the results are surprising in terms of the high achievement level of students. Also, you have an email, you might not have had a chance to open up your email, but there were some board member questions about this presentation that I answered. So the paper copy of the emails in your folder. This is Christopher.
Thank you, Dr. McBride, and I'll try to be brief. The first thing I will say is I cannot give enough accolades to our teaching staff who, they're the reason that this happened, right? Bob just talked about the strong collaborative work style that they showed this year to really narrow what it is they were teaching, to really think about, how are we gonna determine if students learned it? And then to really think about, how are we gonna help those students that were struggling? So I'm always honored to get, come here and talk about the great things they've done. Also, by creating a schedule where we had time to provide students with the additional support within the confines of the school day. And that was great. We know it wasn't perfect because sometimes teachers would ask students to attend and they wouldn't. And that's gonna be the nice shift we're gonna see next year to ensure that those students do show up and that they do attend when teachers are saying to the students, you need to get some extra support. Our teachers were really creative in offering redos, retakes, opportunities for re-teaching of these students. And they worked hard to ensure the mathematical accuracy of grading. So that's what I would say overall as we head into this. I do apologize that I didn't have the numbers of students by class. But in the email that Dr. McBride shared, you'd see there's roughly 1,000 in the ninth and 10th grade and then roughly 900 at the 11th and 12th grade as you looked at this. So overall, we saw that we had a strong showing of students receiving As and a very low amount of Fs. And on the last page of the report I shared with you as well, sorry, Matt. On the last page of the report, I shared with you that we did have a prescriptive credit recovery that we ran from February to April where there were some students who were extended learning is what we called it. But that's not what it really was in the historical context of how the districts run it before. So some students used APACs and there's a prescriptive program in there where they kind of take a test, see what they need to know. And then that's what they worked on. I wouldn't say we had great success, but we had some students who were able to do it. For other students, you could see it was a self-management issue, right? They had trouble managing their time within the confines of the school day and then adding on another layer was a little bit too much. I know both Bob and I would say, as we go out and talk to our colleagues in other districts, our As and our Fs are just insurmountable. So many other districts would talk about 20% failure rates and what are they gonna do in the summer? I think, I did comment on, Matt, I'm on the one that looks like this, it's like the third page. We had more As at the freshman level simply because students have more class offerings there. If you look at our historical DF trend, you can stop right there. You can see that our lowest time was in 2020. This is comparing second semester of these three years. And we know, and we illuminated the board to some of the grading shifts that we took at the end of the pandemic when students were not face-to-face with their teachers at all and we were doing a lot of asynchronous work. The next page showed just this again, and this is why I apologize for not putting the numbers in. We were looking at this data regularly just to see what's going on, how do we need to support the students? And you can see that there was a, again, a continued decrease in the DFs over the course of the semester. The next page, this, the next couple of pages with the DF trend by ethnicity, the DF trend by special education status is not a surprise after what we just saw in the DMG report. And so, again, some of the strategies by really focusing on looking at those students with CDs and Fs that we talked about, including PAC time, will help us with these shifts in the future. This board has continually supported those students that continue on and continue to battle for that diploma. So we talked to you a little bit about the students who are currently enrolled in summer school, those students that are in the park section. And then I already alluded to that, that we did do some prescriptive credit recovery second semester. And then we have it running again this summer. And then lastly, I just gave you some data on our students who were fully remote. This is just for second semester. Those students that were fully remote compared to our general students did not have as many As proportionately. But again, did have a strong showing and we did have a very comparable number of Fs between students who were in hybrid or in person and then those students that were fully remote. Do you have any questions? I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
District Goals Dashboard Report.
District Goals Dashboard. This is really a document for, a working document for board members and for the public to see in real time how we're pursuing the goals that we've set as a district. So this takes us all the way through a full July 1 to June 30. You know, we have six district goals in the areas of curriculum and support, facilities and finance, climate and culture, human resources, technology and communication. So this gives people an idea of the small steps that you take to reach those goals. Some of the headlines, goal progress in curriculum, made tremendous progress reaching out to Lewis University for a possible partnership, enrollments in Wilco and enrollments in dual credit, which are career and college readiness. We continue to hit our goal of having six to 12 months of cash on hand as really the statement that the board agreed on as financial health for us. We continue to be right in there despite changes in the pandemic, the economy, potential inflation, change in the tax collection structure here in Will County as well. In terms of climate and culture, our principals continue to work, their focus has been on mathematics and working with mathematic teams, just as an area that needs particular attention, we feel. And the measure there is how many math students were getting help in that time that we had set aside for that. Mr. Kandari has been busy hiring new staff. We hired a total of 10 new teachers primarily to replace retirees, modest amount of growth. We are happy to hire three teachers of diverse backgrounds, important, we believe, in guidance, special education and English. And sort of replenishing the retirements, that whole issue of succession I've shared. When this was written, Chromebooks have shipped it, had actually shipped, the Chromebooks are here. So in an age where everyone is having supply chain problems, the Chromebooks are here. And then just a tremendous amount of job we're doing in communications to document our stories. What's the story of our CCC program? What's the story of our PARC program? What's the story of our Student Equity Action Committee? So, any questions about the, it's one way that we as an administrative team share our work with the public, with you, and then also keep ourselves in conversation about the progress we're making.
No questions, but can I make a suggestion? There's a lot, a lot of information in this report.
Yeah.
Can we, only be, maybe I'm getting, I am getting old, but getting older. I have trouble, you know, unless we get the new Chromebooks this year, that you might have a little bigger screen if that's coming.
A more visually appealing format?
Well, it's hard, it's hard to read.
Yeah.
And even when you expand, I know how to expand it, but then it doesn't let you page up and down. And it's like, oh, I mean, we could almost cut it into two pages.
Right.
Just a thought.
Yeah, well, we're starting a brand new, it's Google Sheets that we use and I think that's part of the problem. So I suffer from the same issue, Mr. Ives.
All right, just saying.
Yeah, I agree with you. We, you know, we're starting anew in July.
Okay.
I have to magnify it too.
Well, even magnifying it, then you can't move, it doesn't let you go from side to, you know.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, absolutely right.
That's true. All right, next is our Student Online Personal Protection Act, SOPA. SOPA, is that how you?
SOPA, yeah, that's. SOPA is the way that all of us have begun to, or are referring to it. So the Student Online Privacy and Protection Act was enacted a couple of years ago, but becomes official or we're subject to it July 1. And while we've always taken student data and privacy seriously in the district, the law requires all Illinois districts to enter into agreements mostly around data breaches and how organizations that do have our data or our students' data respond, what they're doing to protect the data as well as responding to breaches if they occur and the notifications and all of those sorts of things. Because breaches had occurred and then people didn't know that they had occurred because companies maybe felt like it wasn't that important or not enough data was breached. So there, all those thresholds were established through the law. And what this requires vendors, and now that we're coming closer and closer, all of the big vendors are on board or have begun to sign these agreements. Even Google has finally, that one was, was one that we all believed would have been a bigger fight. And it was somewhat of a fight, but they, they agreed to the terms of the act. And so those agreements are being signed off on. So the big ones for any district are your student management system, which is Infinite Campus for us. Mastery Manager is one of our testing programs and that's got significant data in it. Google obviously has a lot of student data just simply by the fact that we use Gmail and Google Drive to obtain those. I mean, to store that information. And then, and then you get lower and lower down the spectrum of companies that simply have student ID numbers in order to do logins to authenticate that a student is who they say they are. So the, where we are with this, those agreements are being signed. And it's a, it's a fairly quick two-step process now of submitting it to the company and them returning it to us. There's been a consortium built for Illinois or with Illinois, other Illinois districts. So once one school gets one of these agreements signed, then other schools can essentially just jump on board and the agreement's exactly the same for all districts. Exhibits E and G are the, you know, way that we all in the industry refer to getting these things signed and taken care of. And finally, it's a, it's going to be an ongoing process. So, you know, the big ones, Infinite Campus, Mastery Manager, Google, those ones will be signed. And then as we, as new products come on board, we can't really approve them or purchase them without this information getting signed and taken care of. And then, and it doesn't cover everything we use. So one of the caveats to the law is if the product wasn't educationally designed or directly marketed to an education audience, and YouTube is a perfect example, right? That is just a general-use website. Twitter is a general-use website. Those aren't required to be part of the agreement, only the ones that are specifically educationally based. Questions? Yeah, it's a really exciting unfunded mandate that we've all had to deal with. But again, I think very, very, the school districts of Illinois have worked really well together along with the state to bring this, you know, it was released two years ago. Everybody just kind of sat back and waited and then in the last six months, the ball has really gotten rolling and it's, it's happening relatively easy. And we're not the first state to do it. California, New York, some other states have other similar laws. And so it's just a matter of these companies seeing the legal documents and then agreeing to them and then signing on, jumping on board. Did you have a question?
Oh, no, never mind. I just answered it in my head.
Okay.
Great, thanks, Matt.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have the District's 2021-2022 Insurance Coverage through the collective library through CLIC.
Right, and Mrs. Croy is happy to answer any questions, as am I. This really shares with the board in full technicolor, in essence, renewing our liability insurance and refamiliarizing the board with CLIC. Mrs. Croy has indicated some of the more substantial themes. Important to note, since we've been a member in 2006, we continue to save over other vendors. So even though our liability insurance is probably our most costly insurance, we continue to operate it as savings. We also continue to insulate ourselves from liability. As board members looked at the presentation, you might look at, there is every kind of insurance under the sun that you can imagine. But you will notice there is no pandemic insurance. No current liability insurer offers liability insurance for the pandemic and any of the kind of consequences for the pandemic. Which puts for the board, just to remind the board, your responsibility of if you were, you know, ever brought legal action for a liability, being in a situation to say that you had addressed all the types of mitigations and safety protocols that would be necessary to keep a safe situation for everyone involved. Some of the themes that you're seeing, weather-related losses, ransomware attacks. You were very far-seeing last year where we purchased the maximum amount of insurance we could. This has become so popular, CLIC is almost holding back on selling additional insurance to clients. We'd like to get as much cyber insurance as we, as we can. And there are many, many liability companies that are pulling out entirely from cyber insurance just because of what's happened across, across the country from a number of different bad actors. Let me pause there. Questions that you have from Mrs. Croy? This is, you know, really our renewal season.
Now, you know I couldn't read all that insurance and not have a question.
Well, of course, we would have been.
Be disappointed, I know.
We would be.
I'm back here.
Should I hear?
You're 12 feet away, good. Of course, on the commercial premium that you have, you did a great job on this breakdown. Is that commercial liability or is that commercial property as well?
Commercial premium is our, that's the property.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That is the property.
Yeah, so that number ties with, so if you look at the other excerpts, that's gonna cover the property casualty. So it's, the way that I have that split in there, I want to go back to what I was just looking at. It's everything other than, so it includes the auto, it includes the school board legal, it includes the property coverage for damage to, you know, leaky roof or whatever. It includes all that stuff.
It's all, yeah, because that, because it wasn't solely just liability, it includes property as well.
Yes.
That's all I need to know. Thanks. That's easy.
And so what is presented here does include 2 million of the cyber coverage. And then we've for sure obtained an additional 3 million, so we have five. And CLIC is working on trying to get the additional five that we had last year. So hopefully by July 1, I will have the 10 million secured that we had last year.
Hopefully, we don't have to call it.
Right, right. So, you know, obviously, when we did this application, I had to work with math department on all of, there were increasing number of questions about cyber protection, like what do we do? You know, do we test our employees on phishing emails? Do we, you know, do we have all of the two-factor authentication for high, you know, security? Do we, you know, do we have all of the, um, two-factor authentication for high, you know, security programs? You know, programs that need highest level of security? Do we have separate security access that's all set up in these major programs? So hopefully, we answered those questions better than most, and, and will have less problems with the coverage. Because that seems to be one of the things that people are, that the vendors are hinging on. If you don't do these things, we won't provide you coverage.
Right.
So, so far, we're working to, to make sure we maintain all that, so we have no problem. Thank you.
Thanks.
And thank you for that historical data, at least for us to see.
Thank you.
All right, next we have the Public Safety Officer intergovernmental agreement.
Just from board information, we renewed our Public Safety Officer Agreement with the City of Lockport and Lockport Police. And it, it, since its first inception, I believe, two years ago or, or four years ago, it, it only requires the Chief of Police and the Superintendent to sign off on it for it to automatically renew for two years. And so that structure, the Public Safety Officer as opposed to a School Resource Officer is really the, the structure we have in place because our two current Public Safety Officers are our District 205 employees, and would continue on and, you know, until there might be, you know, they might retire or they might resign. But basically, with that intergovernmental agreement at your disposal, talks about how they acquire, maintain, and sustain their police powers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next we have the Capital Project Expenditure and Interfund Transfer summaries.
Uh, these are a summary, just always keeping the board abreast. These are projects that you should be familiar with, the central repairs that we're doing, especially on masonry this summer. And then also, probably July will be a hard hat tour of the library here at East Campus, which is taking shape. Right now, it's, it's fairly well gutted, and if you want to see the, the results of that gutting, it's in the parking lot. But they're, they're working apace, you know, really trying to make our August 27th. So those are the fund transfers that we've done to pay those, those current bills, and where those bills currently, currently are.
Thank you.
And then finally, the maintenance report. Mr. Thompson, great maintenance report. You know, primarily, it was interesting on COVID. I can't remember if it was the CDC, if it was Gallup, someone just recently did a national poll about what parents are the most concerned about going into this school year, and it was ventilation. Interesting. We have worked a good deal on ventilation, you know, sharing what we're doing to take a second look at our precision controls, which control our systems. But probably the, the main headline is here at East Campus with our, our chiller. We have a single chiller that controls the entire system. It's a 900-ton chiller. And a couple of important components. When a 900-ton chiller is replaced, it usually requires either a Sikorsky helicopter or requires a, a construction-grade boom crane, which getting that on-site is a significant expense. Attendant to that is a cooling tower, and we had a very long talk with our consultants. The only way to really test things like the base of the cooling tower is to remove the cooling tower. And so we've really made a decision that if we're going to replace the chiller, the cooling tower, we should replace that as well so that we don't incur the cost of having a Sikorsky helicopter return or a, a large boom crane return at the same time. The amazing thing is our relationship with ComEd. As you saw in the report, we've done so many projects with ComEd, they're offering a $360,000 incentive for us to replace it because as you can imagine how much electricity a chiller like that pulls down. So as, you know, the bottom line is, we are likely going to get a 900-ton chiller and cooling tower for about $10,000 is our estimate. Media Center at East is moving apace, and the structural repairs at Central are, are moving along as well. No surprises there with the masonry, it's turning out exactly, no surprises here at East East as well. You know, when you get into that stuff, sometimes you find out things behind walls in, in the project itself. We're also starting to take a look at the auditorium. The sound system, the lighting system in the auditorium is 25 years old, and we want to bring in an auditorium, a theater, a sound consultant, really to take a look at that system to say what, what is, is needed. It's a good time now because, as you know, that's one of the most rented facilities in Lockport Township. We haven't been renting it much this year, but it'll pick up again, and obviously hosts all of our, our theater and our music and, and many other events. And then you can just see, it's summer, right? There's winter and construction season in Chicago, and we are doing all of the projects that you have approved, and, and they're all here. So if I can answer any questions, lots of work getting done right now, very busy.
There was, I, I thought graduation, the grounds looked fabulous.
They did a great job, yeah.
They really did.
Really an outstanding job.
It was really nice.
And just a side, one, one side, Mr. Ives and I talked about this, I spoke with a few other people. Mr. Slager's helping me, Mr. Thompson, but we are looking at the face of the district office. And even though it says the home of the porters, Mr. Thompson and I have some solutions that we think could make that a more updated, a clearer spot, a more visually appealing spot, and a couple of us are, are working on that right now.
We're gonna move the bird nests.
I don't know, maybe we'll have some kind of nesting roost or something.
There you go.
Uh, by the way, just a little research, the last time that that building had an exterior, any exterior work done on it was apparently 1999. And that white color of the aluminum steel cladding was kind of a lime green. So if you want to talk about fading, it's white now. So, that's the maintenance report.
Thank you. All right, and no need for a closed session, and then announcements, as you can see, a couple of announcements there.
Yeah, very brief, we're closed on Monday, July 5th, as the Fourth of July holiday, and then July 19th is our next, next board meeting. And hopefully, we'll be able to bring you just a lot more in terms of what we know about the state.
All right. Okay, all right, then, just need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
No closed session?
There is no closed session.
Mr. Travis, I know you made the motion. Who, who seconded it, was Ms. Johnson or Mr. Ives?
Give Luanne credit for her.
All right, Ms. Johnson, she seconded it, okay. All right, 9:32, all in favor, or do we need a rope up for that?
Rope.
All in favor, all right.
Does anybody not favor, leave it?